Good evening. I have 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 26th, 2024. Be reminded, please, we are being televised and recorded by Sandwich Community Television. We'd like to commune, convene the meeting with the Pleasure Allegiance, and may I ask for, remain standing for a moment of silence afterwards, please.
A pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just as we convene our first meeting without our colleague, Michael Miller, just a moment of silence in his fond memory, please. Thank you. Anybody for public comment? Review and approval of minutes, November 7th, 2024.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of 11:07:24.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three zero. Town manager report.
Just a few updates. I know our meeting schedule is a little bit off kilter in light of the holidays and some of the things that transpired over the last week. So our next meeting is actually next Thursday, which is December 5th, and the intent. Couple of big things on there. One is the tax classification workshop with the Director of Assessing, Ben Stich, and then the tri-board meeting with the Finance Committee and the School Committee, which we're going to talk about a little bit later, in terms of budget topics and other areas of focus. A couple of other quick things. We did get formal word from the Cape and Vineyard Electric Collaborative that those solar projects that we've seemingly been working on for five-plus years are officially dead. The contractor, who was the low bidder through the state and everything, has backed out for all the reasons that I know Heather's updated us on, just on the cost and the time delays for the interconnection with Eversource. So those projects are dead. So, you know, we'll have to see what opportunities exist down the road, but it's probably fair to say until the upgrades happen to the distribution system, there's probably not much we can do. But we'll continue to try on that front. I know the ceremony was held this week on the Green Communities Designation that was announced at our last meeting, so Leanne Drake was able to go to that. And then the other thing I wanted to provide an update on, other than the items on the agenda a little bit later, we did open bids last week on the upgrades to the wastewater system at Sandwich Middle High School. So we had three competitive bids. The low one, you know, we're just reviewing their proposals now, so should have a recommendation for the board shortly on those. But they're all in line with what they, the low bid was what we hoped, around the area, we hoped it would be, and we have sufficient funding. So when the time comes for that, it's over a million dollars, so you guys will have to take a vote instead of something that I could award. So we'll put that on an upcoming agenda, and I think everything else we're going to talk about later tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I thought of one thing.
Sure.
If we went ahead with our meeting last Thursday night, it would have included a public hearing on a utility poll. Because we canceled the meeting, actually it was last Wednesday, right? Because we canceled the meeting, we had to re-advertize. So that's not going to happen until December, our December 19th meeting. And it was not an issue with the, with the company, so they're good.
That's an Eversource application.
It is, yep.
Thank you. Yes. Bud, with the solar that we were going to do to the high school, that's what you were talking about there. Can we put that solar up and have it directly charged into our, to the high school?
Yeah, we have to do more research on that. The one, with all the projects through the Cape and Vineyard Electric Collaborative, you had to connect to the main system from Eversource. So that, that's something we should look at. It's a, it's a much bigger picture now. And also, but you're right, if you tied it in just to the high school, you know, we would probably have to contemplate things like battery storage and other things. But it, it might make sense. It's, it's very complicated. So we, you know, at some point, we should probably hire, you know, a firm or a consulting firm that looks at that, to look into that and see what would be feasible, you know, to figure out what the cost would be, but what the return would be too. Because I mean, what's a shame is that was our intent all along, is the savings on the high school electricity bills would go towards, you know, regular improvements at all the schools. So unfortunately, and then at the, it's a much smaller array, but the one that was looked at for Sandwich Hollows, you know, on the conservative estimates, would have covered all the electric bills up there as well, much, much smaller than the high school. But, but it's just interesting.
I was at the Volk School this weekend, and they're massive out back on the parking lot, solar panels.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I don't know if that, I'm looking at it, I'm going like, geez, we were supposed to do that at the high school, and I wonder if there's this tie-in to the school itself, or interconnected with Eversource.
And in addition to the two projects I mentioned, there were going to be two, two roof-mounted projects at Oak Ridge and Forestale as well, similar to what we have at the Cow Building, you know? So that would, those were much smaller, but it would have helped.
Something we can look at.
Yeah.
Okay. Correspondence, statements, announcements. I, I have a few, if you don't mind. The school committee met on the 20th. Now that Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System, MCAS, through popular vote, will no longer be mandatory for high school graduation requirement to demonstrate competency, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, will develop a competency determination based upon certification by the student's district. More to come on that one. Sandwich Public Schools will continue to develop a 10-year capital plan, which we'll discuss a little bit more later. On the 21st, the school safety committee met. Drills continue. Comprehensive school assessment guidelines are to be considered for incorporation. Progress. On the 21st, the Cape Cod Commission presentation related to roadway safety initiatives was well done, and public input was enthusiastically solicited and accepted pertinent to their Vision Zero Action Plan. 11/26 tonight, down the block. Sandwich Cares met at the Sandwich Library tonight at 6:00 PM. The agenda was scheduled to be led by Duffy Healthcare, whose mission is to provide equitable and integrated healthcare for those with complex health and social needs on Cape Cod. Thank you. Okay. On to old business. The special town meeting on the 18th being dissolved, and to a future date to be determined.
Yeah, so as the board knows, it was a decision made was to dissolve the special town meeting in recognition of Chief Miller's passing. This week, I reached out to the town clerk, the town moderator, and town council just to look at potential future dates, and we even looked at one in December, but that wasn't really going to work. And so the dates, I have it in front of you, but the dates that made the most sense to us in January would be Monday, January 6th, or January 13th. And the following two Mondays don't work as well. One's, one's a hard holiday. And then in February, all the Mondays are good, with the exception of February 17th. Personally, it would, I think it'd be good just to not knock it off and to get them done. In looking at the warrant and speaking with the internal town staff, we don't believe we have to really change the wording on anything or what was going to be requested. If you remember, the Capital Planning Committee met after we had the warrant printed, so we could add their recommendations to the written language, but really, everything else would, would pretty much be the same. And so personally, I would recommend either the 6th or the 13th, whatever the board prefers. And all three people that I mentioned, town council, town moderator, and town clerk are available on both those days. I will say, either one, we should probably sign off and approve the warrant on our meeting on the 19th. Just with all the holidays coming up, it'd be good to get it official and just get it out there and, you know, do the proper postings, et cetera.
You want to wait till the 19th when Shane is here? Want to pick the date?
Yeah. I think the 13th would be good. If somebody's away, January vacation, 13th would give them time to get back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with either day. January.
You gonna get a motion there, Mr. George?
Yeah, make a motion, we do the special town meeting on January 13th, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
And then how about I, I'll get a draft warrant in your packet for next week, and then we'll plan on signing it on the 19th, just with the holidays and everything, so, okay.
Good. Okay. Fiscal year 26 budget schedule, and initial fiscal 20-year, whoops, yeah, 26 focus areas and feedback.
Yeah, so in light of our next meeting including a bigger gathering with the Finance Committee and the School Committee, I wanted to go through a couple of things in the packet. So the rough timeline is very similar to almost every year, and it meets the required dates in the town charter. I want to stress that the one-page budget summary that we're so used to looking at through the winter, that's, that's the final FY25 budget after the state approved its final numbers. And the reason I think that's the only one we should include in the packets next week is there's just so much, so many of these line items aren't finalized for months. And some of them, I don't want to even guesstimate at, based on some of the feedback that we've heard. So I think it would be prudent, just to sort of ease into the more detailed discussions, we have plenty of time to talk about the operating budgets once the budgets are submitted. I don't think there's going to be a lot of controversy or any huge initiatives other than a couple that I'll mention in a second. The early scuttlebutt that we've heard is probably the, the biggest things that are out of our control, and apparently, this is happening across the Northeast and other parts of the country. Health insurance costs have really gone up a lot, and there's a lot of reasons for it. And so that would be something that maybe we want to talk about in a little bit more detail. But I think based on what the board has talked about, what the Finance Committee's talked about at their meetings, I think it might make more sense to spend more time talking about some of those large-scale capital projects and to, a smaller group of us met a couple times to talk about retaining, I don't know if it would be an architect or a product cost estimator, like a firm that would come in similar to what we had done 17 years ago, especially to look at the school buildings and, and give us, you know, a summary of what some of the primary repairs would be, what the cost would be. It would be helpful, even on our newer buildings, just to get some feedback. For example, on 106A, you know, we didn't replace the windows, you know, hey, you guys should think about replacing the windows over the next 20 years. Not, you know, not a lot of detail, but at least some substance to some of our larger buildings, like we think it would be helpful. So just to show you, I included like an internal agenda that we had the last time a group of us met in early September. And then from that meeting, there's an email from me to the school and town staff, a follow-up from that meeting where I had done some research on the type of firms that do that review, and, you know, ones that might be available. I reached out to three other towns. Probably, one of the biggest helps was Barnstable. Barnstable, believe it or not, has four different architectural firms on contract annually. Anytime an issue comes up, they contact one of them to take a look at the issue and, and help them with it. Obviously, I think that's a lot more than what we need, but we sure could use, I think, an outside firm to come in, similar to what we did with Ryder Level Bucknell, Levitt Bucknell, 17 years ago, believe it or not. It's been that long. And then, so what we did to help facilitate that, the page after that email with some color on it, we got a spreadsheet from our insurance carrier, sorted it by town and school buildings. And I want to stress, this was early on, meaning my, my work internally, the yellow buildings we thought were no brainers, the peach ones we thought we probably should, and the green ones, like what did we think? It's fair to say we've updated these and have clarified just yellow and, and ones maybe we don't need to look at. I think it would be helpful, but.
Well, think about when we were in the process of trying to decide what to do with the wing school. The part that made that work for people was KBA did their analysis of the building and a rundown, an independent rundown of what, what was it? What would it take to fix it, and what would, you know, potential cost be to flip the building over? And that gave us, that gave everybody to operate off the same platform. So if you have a chance for that, I would, I would highly recommend that. You know, we get them on retainer so that they're available. There's enough firms out there that can help, and there are firms that are going to look just for that. There are niche firms that work in the public sector, know the laws and regs.
We, we spoke with town council, and if you hire a cost estimator, an architect, it doesn't technically have to be bid, but they did recommend, like if we did a simple scope of work with a list of building square footages and sort of like what systems we want them to review, which I think there's a page on here that just, we took a whack at what the wording would be, and then Taylor McDonald helped, you know, wordsmith it so it made more sense. So my intent would be for our meeting next week to have that organized a little bit better. And I almost think that, that should probably be as, as much if not more of a discussion than the operating budget, because, you know, we're going to be working on that for many months. And then, I guess, once we figure out what you guys feel about that, I would love to get your feedback just on a couple of smaller things on the general government operating budget that would help us as we put things together.
Not at all to denigrate our opinions and perceptions. It's always good to have a professional opinion.
Somebody outside that you can, then you develop, you know, rapport with them.
And I think the schools were very upfront with us that, you know, they're nervous about the projects they wanted to get done with the roughly 15 and a half million they had. And now, you know, some of the bids have come back higher than the funds they have available. So, you know, we should look at that as well, because those are repairs that still need to happen. And try to get a better handle on what, what those numbers are and what some of the work would be. I'll have a much better list of the buildings in your packet that's easier to read. This is, I just tried to fit it on one page.
Yeah, that's a great case in point, and I agree. Do we need a motion on that?
No, I think as long as, that's, I'll include some backup on that in the package.
We have consensus, right? Okay, okay.
And then can I just run one more thing by you? So right behind the one-page budget summary is the summary of what, on our so-called FY25 and beyond modernization and efficiency plan, we knocked off a number of those things last year, which was, has been hugely helpful and has really made a difference. And then on the second page, it showed you at the top what we wanted to try to get done in FY26. And I just wanted to highlight a couple things. You know, the positions that we were looking at aren't funding a new full-time position. It's more like supplementing work of a part-time position, or looking at some part-time assistants, or possibly adding some additional duties to an existing position. So in those first three items that are listed, about a shared office assistant between two departments going from part-time to full-time, the assistant library director position, and a part-time PR specialist or grant writer. Those are things that, in the scheme of things, are quite inexpensive, to me, are sort of no brainers at this stage in the budget process, because, because it's early. And then, if you remember when Brian Schlegel was before the Finance Committee in June and gave his summary, he was asked, like, how much more would he need in his annual operating budget just to keep buildings up, separate from if something big goes wrong, like for example, this building? Because that would require more money, and it was $60,000. So in working with Bill Jennings, we're pretty far along in our budget development process. Granted, we have a long way to go, but at this early stage, we've got quite a bit of our data inputted. And I, you know, our goal would be to try to include those four things. And I would say the big thing that we're struggling with, but I think we can find a way to show you what the numbers would look like easily. Like, we had talked about trying to get the public infrastructure improvement money to a grand total of 2.6 million annually, which is what the last pavement management study said. If you recall, we added some extra money two years ago, and then the state adopted that so-called millionaire's tax that helped, although those numbers are down compared to last year. But the difference is roughly about 550,000. So obviously, that is a really big percentage of our total budget, if we tried to include that. But we want to take a stab. So if you don't mind, we'll work on that, show you what the numbers are, and we could have a discussion easily, you know, leading up to the budget presentation at the end of January. If there's other ways to skin the cat on the infrastructure money, we could consider different things. But you, we've looked at a couple of numbers recently. It's not that bad when you look at the percentage increase. And partially because we've had some of those office efficiency savings, which are included, will be included, where we've gotten rid of a position or two. And then also, we're working with In Good Health about a donation agreement for the school resource officer positions. And I think our fear last year was, we didn't want to do it on speculation. I'm paraphrasing, we wanted to have money in the account before we even went to town meeting. And so that's what we're working on with them and town council. But I'm pretty confident we'll be able to pull that off. So that, that would be like a $200,000 saving. So when you make all these changes, departments have identified a couple of cost centers that have increased, you know, beyond our control, but it's nothing crazy. The numbers are coming back pretty good so far in terms of the general government budget. So I just thought, like, if we wanted to try to put in, to affect these last few things, I could at least show you what those numbers would come out like, and we could talk about it before we did the budget presentation at the end of January. I think that would be helpful. And I'm not saying even for next week, but maybe, you know, later in December, early January, we could try to hone in on what you guys would prefer to see. There's, especially on the public infrastructure, there's a couple different ways to do that. Three different ways, really, yeah.
That'd be interesting discussion. And also, the, the title that ticked off in, in my mind is grant writer. And, and that would seem to be very productive, to take the burden of responsibility off of some other people in town and have someone dedicated to it, even if it's only on a part-time basis. It's a significant idea in, in my mind.
We've talked to a couple towns that have been very successful with it. We've been really successful on our own, thankfully, but you're right, Charlie. You know, there could be others that we just don't have the time to do that might be worth exploring. And I want to highlight that information in yellow, because I don't want us to forget that. And I did get an update recently, so, you know, the board approved that intermunicipal agreement on regional dispatch. I saw a timeline today that part, phase two of the grant that we have with the town of Barnstable and Yarmouth and us should be completed in March, and that's on the 60% C and D, construction and whatever D is, the design for the, for the regional dispatch center, which would be next to the Barnstable Police Station, relatively small footprint. If that gets completed on that time scale, timeframe, the next round of state funding would be by that July 1st. That would be to take it all the way to construction design and bidding. So if you play it out, their, their goal is to have it operational at some point in calendar year 2027. So it could be early in the year, it could be late in the year, it could roll over into '28. But, you know, the consultant's report, which is very exact, says that Sandwich will save at least $700,000 for the first three years, and then a little bit less after that. But that's, that's a lot of money when you look at our total budget. And then, don't forget, a couple years after that, the debt finally gets paid off on Sandwich Hollows and FY30. So that's going to free up $400,000 within our levy. So there's $1.1 million within our levy that, at that point, I, I would strongly recommend those in our seat consider just putting that money aside and trying to save some money, because, you know, I think we've made some really good inroads these last few years on some of our operational needs and some of our capital needs. And I, I would say on the town side, we have one glaring one, and that's EPW Fire. But if and when that's addressed, at that point on the town side, for everybody, we're looking at wastewater, and that's about it. So that, that's pretty good. But those costs, as we all know, are going to be significant.
Yes, but necessary.
Necessary and outside of our control in many ways, so.
And the, and the financial efficiencies to the municipalities involved in joint dispatch, it's just, it's, it's.
It's great, yeah.
It is.
Yep, and we're convinced we'll get better service too, so that's good. And our, we're very fortunate. We, our, our joint dispatch does a great job. You know, those other two towns don't have joint dispatch in totality. So we're lucky.
Yes, we are. Anybody else? Questions, other matters not reasonably anticipated, but by the chair? I have none. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on to new business. Approval of third quarter 2024 donations. See this list. I don't know, council on aging, $50, respite caregiver donations, the fire department, $138, fire donations. The fire department, $1,325, CPR training donations. Parks, $1,600, tree planting donations. Police department, $100, police donations. Council on Asian, again, $2,757.90 donations. Council on Aging, $3,881.79 bus trip donations. Library, $1,300, library, $474.91 lost book donations. Recreation, $250, recreation scholarship donations. Recreation, $6,356, recreation donations. Historic, $105, library, $862.78, the Segor library donations. Police department, again, $225, community policing and select board, $1,287.50 boardwalk donations, for a total of $20,714.64. We have a motion to accept?
Make a motion, we approve the third quarter 2024 donations as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, three zero. Recommended Conservation Commission appointments. Aaron Copeland as a full-time member, Cameron Murphy to an alternate member. We have a, a letter from the commission. Anybody have any different thoughts? Mr. Murphy would be changing to an alternate, and, and Mr. Aaron Copeland would be the full-time. Amber filling the unexpired term. full-time member, filling the unexpired term of Mr. Murphy.
Make a motion, we make the appointments of Aaron Copeland as a full-time member, Cameron Murphy as an alternate member, as presented. The dates we have.
Second. Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 3-0. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the Chairperson? I have none. Anybody else? Okay. A public comment? Okay. Closing remarks.
Hey, one.
Sure?
I would just like to mention that serving was Mike Miller, is a classmate, is a member of the Board of Selectmen. We're going to miss him very dearly. Was great working with him. May he rest in peace.
Well said.
Amen.
I have a couple of brief ones as well. May our Sandwich community enjoy a happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday. Meanwhile, let us please continue to maintain those under attack in Eastern Europe, the conflict in the Middle East, and the overall threats to world peace. In our thoughts and prayers. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion we adjourn.
Second. Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 3-0. Our next meeting, Thursday, December 5th, 2024, at 7:00 PM here in Town Hall. Good night and thank you.